May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zaga-Janian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian. Please remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which this evening will be delivered by Pastor Kurt Pollan from First German United Methodist Church.
Members of the council, citizens of Glendale, let us pray. Holy God, day by day, you astound us with the majesty of your creation. You speak to us your word of truth. You inspire our mortal flesh with your grace. Lead us, Lord, with your wisdom. Humble us with your generosity. Empower us with your call. Let us do our duty today, that our common life, our common wealth, and our common destiny might know blessing and peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Pollan. What is next, Mr. Clerk? Can we have the report?
The agenda for the February 26, 2019, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, February 22, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Presentation and Appointments, at 3A is the Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, March 5, 2019.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Silence in the audience, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For March 5, 2019, there are no agenda items for the housing, Glendale Housing Authority. However, in the afternoon, commencing at 3:00 PM, there'll be a special meeting of the City Council, containing one item, Director of Community Development regarding Arton Entertainment District Workshop. And in the evening, commencing at 6:00 PM, the regular Glendale City Council Agenda. We have a couple of consent items. First, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Contract Award for the Pipeline Management Program Fiscal Year 1819 Phase II Project, specification number 3788, followed by Director of Community Services and Parks, Regarding Verdugo Park North Master Plan Concept Design. Under Action Items, Director of Community Development, Regarding Glendale Burbank Regional Streetcar Feasibility Study Progress Update, followed by Director of Community Development, Regarding Introduction of Downtown Specific Plan DSP Amendments and Zone Text Amendment for Hotel Parking. Then Director of Library Arts and Culture, Regarding Donation of an Artwork, followed by City Manager and City Attorneys, Regarding Board Member and Commissioner Qualifications and Selection Process for Nomination and Appointment to Boards and Commissions. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. Next item, please.
3B is Mayor's Commendation for Glendale YMCA's Youth in Government Program.
Very well, and Jennifer Hiromoto will... Oh. George Seikol will be presenting this item. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
I think that'll do for today, so.
Okay. Do you now want to invite the team up?
Yeah. You want to come right next to me?
Yeah.
Might as well. Mayor Sinanian, members of City Council. I'm George Seikoli, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for your Glendale YMCA. And I want to thank you for acknowledging our first YNG, which is Youth in Government Delegation, in many, many years. You know, the philosophy behind Youth in Government, which is a statewide program with thousands of kids, is democracy must be taught one generation at a time. So this is a prime example of how we teach kids democracy. They're young adults, I do apologize. At this moment, I'm going to let them talk more about their experience because they just came from Sacramento and, you know, if you call them senators and assembly people, they would answer you, actually, so. They're still in the mood. I'd like first to thank the committee, and I'll tell you a quick story how this whole thing started because the program costs a lot of money. It's about $2,100 per young adult, including traveling and staying at the hotels in Fresno and then in Sacramento. And honestly, during the financial hardship, I was dodging it. Then I met Jennifer Hiromoto. Where is she? Is she back? Yeah, from Economic Development in one of the WAI, in one of the city functions. And she said, "You're the Director of the WAI?" I said, "Yes." She said, "You know what? Can I talk to you?" She said, "How about Youth in Government?" And I said, "Okay, but that costs money." She said, "We can drive it. This is the best thing we can do for young adults." So we pulled in a committee, including Mayor Sinanian, Member of Board of Education Arminay Garabetian, who are also on the WAI Board, Steve Bullock, who's our Chair at the WAI, and Jennifer. And you know what? We decided to make it very affordable for all because we're, you know, we have the area that it's not the wealthiest in Glendale. And we, from out of $2,100, we made it affordable for the parents for only $500. And between Jennifer and Mayor Sinanian and the rest, they raised the money. And I'm very proud to say that. This was a tremendous experience for me and a relief because I was worried about the finances. So, and at this moment, I'd like to thank those who have really helped us, including Southern California Gas Company, Glendale Noon Rotary Foundation, Kiwanis Foundation, Noon Kiwanis Foundation, Ray Sands Foundation, and the Hiromotos. So I want to thank all of them. And I got to tell you, Jennifer pushed me, and she's so gung ho about the program and volunteering. And I guess it's contagious because now Philip is interested in becoming a counselor at camp, which is great, beautiful partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll let you without any further ado.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and Councilmembers. I'm Omar Scogosha, I'm the President of the Glendale YMCA Youth in Government Delegation. California YMCA Youth in Government is our premier leadership and civic engagement program. In these past six months, we have worked extremely hard to create a bill and get it passed at our student-run legislation conference in Sacramento. We go to Fresno twice a year and learn about different program areas like Senate, Assembly, and Court. The program concludes with a five-day trip to Sacramento where we take over the Capitol Building and we're actually able to sit in Senate and Assembly chambers and debate on bills. This program is extremely empowering and allows high school students to step out of their comfort zones and learn more about our government. And it's really amazing. Thank you. We will now, I will now introduce the rest of the delegation.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and the rest of the board. I don't know what to say. This program taught me a lot. I'm really blessed to be a part of it. And the trip to Fresno, I couldn't make it to the second one, but I made it. I was at the first one and I went to Sacramento. It taught me a lot. And I want to be a lawyer in the future, so. And this was really a step in the right direction because it's helping me form a career path for me and learn while I'm young. Because if you don't learn while you're young, then you're going to struggle in the future. And this program is great for that. I want to thank Jen and Mina for helping us and striving us to be our best, and Mina for encouraging me to do this program. So thank you so much, and yeah, thank you.
And what's your name?
Hake, Yenji Baryan.
Hi, Yenji Baryan. There you go.
Hi, I'm Janet Louis. I'm a junior at Glendale High School right now. And this program, I participated in the media program, which is basically like journalism, and you got to oversee the different programs throughout the whole conference. And it was really inspiring to me. Like, I'm very thankful to be a part of it. I got to see so many other students my age so interested in government and politics. And it showed me options for my future because I'm not too sure about what I want to do. But yeah, I'm really thankful to be a part of it. Next year, I'm hoping to apply for an issues and activism position where you kind of, you help plan the program and invite speakers and stuff like that. So yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Nyra Garpetyan. I'm a junior at Glendale High School. And this year, I decided to join the court program, specifically appellate court. And that was a really, really amazing program. And it gave me a chance to learn more about the judicial system and see the judicial system in like specific cases in the eyes of an attorney. And it was a really, really great experience. I learned how to read a case file, read a fact pattern. I learned how to make arguments in front of a panel of judges. And it was a really great experience. Next year, I think I'm going to join the California Emergency Team Program. Thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Hello, my name is Eva Bassel, and I'm a sophomore at Westwood School in Pasadena. I've been part of the Glendale Delegation of Youth in Government for one year, and I had the chance to be the secondary bill sponsor and defend our bill in the actual Assembly Chambers, which is, as Councilmember Devine explained, is the really green room. And our bill passed, so that was really, really great. So just thank you for giving us this opportunity. Next year, I am excited to join either issues and activisms, bench or jury trial, or the legislative houses again, hopefully this time as Chief Whip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lily Armstrong, and I am a freshman at Glendale High School. I had the opportunity to serve as a clerk for the Minors Rights Committee of the Forum, meaning that I had the opportunity to help write a bill, both with our delegation bill and with our committee bill. And Youth in Government has taught me how to form my own opinion and just encouraged me to pay attention to what's going on around me and how we can actually make change. So I'm very grateful to have had this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Narek Shakalian. I was in the bench trial program area. And it was such an eye-opening experience for me because when you first get there in SAC, you have five days, and they give you a huge case file, like 50 pages or something. And they basically just throw you right into there and they're like, make a whole trial out of it. And so you're either defense or prosecution, and you just have to kind of live in the shoes of a lawyer for those five days. And I know that it was super, super busy. Like, I didn't see anyone in my delegation for five whole days. I would like sleep for five hours, and it was just a great experience, even though it was really tiring.
Good for you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Erera, and I was in the program area of International Affairs Commission. So we had the opportunity to find a problem internationally and create a solution along with four other delegates from all over California. And overall, it was an amazing experience because it's something that I want to do in the future. I want to be involved in international relations. So it was a step in the right direction. And to all the other student ambassadors in the room, I really encourage you guys to join their program next year. And anyone else, like any youth that you know, please tell them to join. It's an amazing experience. And anyone who's interested in sponsoring us or just helping future delegates, we would really appreciate it because we do want to help our delegation grow, and we need the help of sponsors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. We are truly and extremely blessed to have had this opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and don't walk away. Don't go away. So when we started this, I was actually just invited to join the committee. I remember the first day when most of you came with your moms. I think a couple of you came with your dads. But everyone was kind of reluctant. Everyone was trying to feel things out. What is this about? Is this good? Is this bad? But it sounds like you've had an amazing experience. It's inspired you. It's given some of you focus as to what it is that you want to do. And you've really seen how, you know, politics is made in Sacramento, which is an experience that not too many students of your age get to have. So congratulations on that. I was really hoping to see you in Sacramento. I literally flew in. Right after you left the Capitol, I went to the Capitol, and I was in touch with Jennifer, but you guys were all broken up into your sections, convention center, all over the place. But what matters is that you've done a great job. You passed your bills through both houses. And now you're, you know, mock legislators. So congratulations. I'm sure my colleagues have some kind words for you.
I'd like to, you know, I am a former teacher. And so what I see in front of me is a group of young people that are confident, that are well-spoken, and absolutely empowered. And that is the best that you can ask of any program that you ever are a part of. And thank you, Jennifer, George, the mayor, and your parents for letting you be a part of this program because it's obviously been a real, real impressive, impressive change in all of you and a kind of a checkmark on your list of great things to do. So keep up the good work. And I look, one of these days, you may be sitting right here. You never know.
Or in Sacramento.
Or in Sacramento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They already have. They had one of their sessions here. And we, my wife and I, we were here in attendance. And they conduct a very professional meeting. And I want to congratulate all of you. This is a great program. As you can tell, the experience is invaluable. I mean, it wasn't just Sacramento. They, you had two more trips to Fresno, if I'm not mistaken. And having the teamwork done, it's just, again, you can't put a price on it. And the experience and just giving you the opportunity to speak before a big crowd, it's amazing. And I know a few of the young ladies, they grew up with my daughter. I'm proud to say that Nyra is my daughter, if anybody didn't know this from the last name. And they're all very, very good kids overall, from good families. And I'm very proud of all of you. You've done a great job. I want to thank the WAI. This program is not easy to do. Jennifer did a great job. I mean, we can't thank you enough, Jennifer, Mr. Mayor, for being part of the team to raise funds for these kids. And it's an expensive program, but they pulled it off. And kudos to all of you. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, what a great program. I was not aware of this program till just now. But I really like to hear that there's some of you that want to be attorneys. I'm an attorney. The mayor is an attorney. And what the city needs is more attorneys. And I'm serious. Because it is a great way of, it's a great career. It's a great profession. It's a great way of teaching you how to think about issues critically. And being an attorney has certainly helped me up here on council. And some of you will surpass where we are now and go to Assembly and State Senate, Congress, US Senate, Governor. And what a great way to start out. So thank you, George, and Jen, and the mayor, and everyone involved in this process. Very happy that you're here before us.
When I heard that you went to Sacramento, I was very worried that you have to associate with politicians. So that, you know, but I'm glad that they behaved themselves and you have that picture that they were great and you learned a lot. So I'm glad to hear that. And I, you know, YMCA is doing a great job. I'm glad that you went to Sacramento and you learned a lot. So thank you for coming to this.
Mr. Mayor, before you read the commendation, can we ask one of you, maybe Omarus, to tell us about the bill that you passed?
Yes. So our bill advocated for more transparency in factory farms. So right now, as we know, the treatment of these animals, it's inhumane. It's horrible. They feed them their own waste. These animals live in their own waste. And so our bill basically just, it requires factory farms in California to submit a biannual report to the California Food and Agriculture Administration, which states like confinement measurement, chemical and antibiotic levels and usage, and timing and methods of waste disposal. And it requires them to put all this information in a biannual report. And this report is made public and it's put online. So we are able to see this information about what we're putting into our bodies. So therefore, we are allowed to have more, we have more control over what we eat.
Very nice. Good presentation.
Good job.
So congratulations once again. George, congratulations to YMCA, and thank you for reviving this program. And I'm assuming this is going to be perpetual now, every year. And apparently Phil Lanza-Fame and Councilmember Najarian are volunteering to be on the committee next year. But Mina's name didn't get meant, I think, thank you. Good job. And of course, Jennifer Hiromoto did a lot of the heavy lifting. So Jennifer, awesome job as always. And thank you to all the other committee members who helped put this together. I have some commendations for you. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to help me present them to you, and then we can take photos. Sir? One more. Bring them, bring it. I don't have two, so. Okay, let's have quiet. City Council's still in session. Let's have quiet in the chambers. Folks. Folks, please. Sir, we're in session. Okay, let's move on with the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, 3C is Appointment of Board and Commission Member. This is for the Design Review Board. It was a nomination by Mayor Sinanian, made on February 12, 2019, for Isabella Boyajian for the DRB.
Yes, I last, at the last meeting, I nominated Isabella Boyajian for Design Review Board. I'll have a short bio for Isabella. She was, she received her Bachelor and Master of Architecture from National University of Architecture and Construction in Armenia. She received her PhD from the same university. She currently teaches architecture at Glendale Community College and is a freelance architectural and interior designer. And she's very active in the community. There's a full roster of all the activities that she's engaged with. And that is my nomination. I need a second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Excuse me, is the candidate or the person in here or?
I'm not sure.
She's absent.
I'm not sure.
I don't believe.
I don't, I don't see her.
Zaga-Janian is here.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is a consent calendar, including minutes, following routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests for a motion as proposed. Mr. Mayor and Council, the staff has requested that 4F be considered separately.
Very well. Will someone move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
4F is fire chief regarding adoption of the City of Glendale Hazard Mitigation Plan. F1 is resolution adopting, adoption, resolution adoption of hazard mitigation plan.
I believe we're going to take this as an action item. So why don't we move on to item number five, City Council or Staff Comments? And with that, do any of my colleagues have comments?
I have one, I have one comment. This morning, I attended a conference on human trafficking that was done by Serap- But now, we got a serious, serious issue on our hands. City Manager Beers, you must be getting complaints into your office, into whatever office. There must be people calling you about this because they're north, south, east and west, midtown, uptown, in the neighborhoods, everywhere. The problem is, you're going to have to pave the entire city before you roll out the electronic scooters. Because this is going to result in numerous, numerous injuries. Mr. Garcia's office is going to inundate it. You're going to get lawsuits. It's going to be a major headache. And so, there goes the warning. You're going to have to pave the whole city, millions of dollars, taxpayer money, before you do the rollout there. Why don't we do this? Mr. Garpadian agrees with me. Why don't we just do the bikes? Why don't we just put 20 or 30 or 40 bikes at the train station, right? Have little docking stations up and down Brand Boulevard, North Brand especially with the big office buildings up. Let the people that want to ride the last mile, let them get on a bike. Why do we need the scooters? We don't need the scooters. We don't need the scooters. Just do the bikes. Let's put... Let's put people before profits. If we don't put people before profits, and you roll this out in the spring, something else is going on that I don't know about. Because I don't think any of you, I don't think any of you want to see people badly injured. It's going to happen. It's a guarantee. It's happened everywhere. San Antonio, Atlanta, Dallas, San Francisco, you name it. You know, and I told you about Santa Monica Injury Law Firm. And the people at home, please look this up, Santa Monica Injury Law Firm. If you want to see the gruesome injuries, it's going to happen. I don't want to see people get injured. And I know you don't want to see people get injured. So, please, dockless bikes, let's say no to the scooters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Passerella. I have a card with the name Nino on it.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My comment tonight involves partially the Right the Lease, but is actually more directed at the City Attorney, Michael Garcia. Mr. Garcia, many people, renters, do not like what happened to Mayor Sinayan, having to be recused when he made his comments about protecting Armenian people here in Glendale, especially the older and non-speaking Armenians who really don't have a voice here and need someone to support them, as well as the Latino, Korean, Filipino, Caucasian, et cetera, et cetera. Myself and others have been calling, emailing the City Attorney, as well as his assistant, Sheila, to try and talk to Mr. Garcia about the mayor getting recused. We all want to know why it happened. And we also want to know what the actual ordinance is that allowed that to happen. I myself have called many times, as well as have gone down to your office for the last two weeks. And I've been told repeatedly, he's busy, he's out of the office, he'll call you back. We've left another email. And guess what? Nothing. He never calls, he never emails, he never contacts anyone back that I know of. And I've spoken to various people on this matter. Why does the City Attorney not return his numerous phone calls and emails on this matter? Is he trying to hide something? Is there actually no law requiring that the mayor have been recused? Why not a simple answer to so many people asking what the legal ordinance is that forced the mayor to be recused? The Right the Lease ordinance that has been passed still does not protect the people from being evicted. Yes, they do get some money, but they still have to move. Bottom line is their lives will be torn apart and they will not be able to afford anything in a neighborhood that they've lived in for so many years. So, yes, they get three to six months' rent to move to Victorville, Palmdale, Apple Valley, whatever, so many miles away from their friends and relatives, and they'll be severely impacted. So, the Glendale City Council thinks they've done very much to solve a problem and it's barely scratched the surface. We're not going to give up the fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Armin Manukyan. Last speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Armin Manukyan. I'm a resident of Glendale. I'm a businessman. I called Glendale Police Station to file an embezzlement report two months ago. Embezzlement was for around $150,000. That was involved stealing two commercial trucks by employees and numerous and various financial stealings. A police officer who dispatched to my house immediately showed signs of hesitation to take the report. When I finished my basic introduction, police concluded that I have only a civil matter. I asked him to explain what made him come to his conclusion that this is a civil case. He could not answer. He took the report with big hesitation for one out of two criminals involved, that is father and son, employed by me. After 10 days or so, I called Police Station to find out about the progress of my case. My messages to return to my calls so I can provide more information to Detective were ignored at least three times. I went to the station myself and met Detective Russ, who was a financial, who is a financial crime unit sergeant. Police Officer Zakarian on my right was present too. He told me he read the report, but he cannot pursue and file with the DA as an embezzlement. During our conversation, he said that father and son have the rights not to speak in a court, their lawyers have the right to argue and other primitive arguments on their favor. Detective told me they don't have enough resources to work on this case. What if the DA rejects after them sitting down and writing the report? I told him my arguments are strong and many different ones, and the very strong evidence and strong case that we can win this case and punish them so they don't do this to others and get justice. Sergeant Russ responded, "I'm not going to sit down and learn your trucking business entirely to be able to help you," and denied my case. He kept insisting that I try my chances in a civil court. I told him that this is not fair and I will file a complaint. He responded, he responds to me, "Go ahead. If the police will not protect us from the crime, it means we will have to take the law in our hands." I'm sure being Armenian has a big factor in this. The way police handled my case is very wrong. I'm sure they do this to others. Glendale PD is the only company who can defend citizens' criminal rights, and they don't. They don't protect the public from crime in many cases. Maybe it has to be only murder for them to step in. $150,000 embezzlement is not worth pursuing. They allow the criminals to prosper by not stopping them. This has to be changed. Our City's council members must step in to change this. This is not the only case that was treated like this. I heard from other people complaining about similar issue with Glendale PD. Why did they refuse to hear my case and immediately conclude, "I don't have a criminal matter"? I'm sure prejudice and discrimination is the number-one factor here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Briefly, as to the prior speaker.
Okay.
I will follow up and see where we are with the response to those inquiries. I know we've had a lot of inquiries, not only on this, but all the other issues related to the actual implementation of the ordinance. But as you might be, as you might imagine, there's going to be... No, I was going to say, as you might imagine, the response pertains to legal advice I gave you and the council. So, my response will be somewhat vague, but I will, we will try to provide a response to those that have inquired.
Very well. And the last speaker's concerns?
With the last speaker, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the police chief is here. He will get the name of the individual and look into the matter and see if there are any issues there that we can follow up on.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. I am going to take item number 9A out of order because apparently we have folks from the county here, and we don't want to keep them too long. So, item 9A.
9A is a hearing. It's Fire Chief regarding 2019 weed abatement program. 9A1 is Motion to Approve Abatement Order Directing the Agricultural Commissioner, Director of Weights and Measures to Abate the Nuisance on Each Declared Parcel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Sylvia Alonsis, Fire Chief. This is a, an item to open the hearing for our weed abatement program that we mailed following council action on February 5. If there's any members of the public that would like to be heard, now is their opportunity.
Public hearing's open. I haven't received any cards on this item. I'm going to close the public hearing accordingly. And this item just calls for a motion to approve abatement order directing the Agriculture Commissioner, Director of Weights and Measures to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinayan?
Yes. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief.
Back to the...
4F?
4F, which we're taking as an action item. Are you back? There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Alonsis, Fire Chief. Before you this evening, I have the pleasure of introducing Art Kirkland and his staff from Castle Emergency Management Consulting. Before I do so, I would like to acknowledge a few individuals who have played a huge part in creating our Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's been about a year in the making to create this five-year plan. With us this evening, Fire Captain Andrew Gano, our paramedic coordinator, who also dubs as our current emergency manager, had a huge part in this. Also, not with us this evening because she's off on baby leave, Eliza Papazian, had a tremendous amount of work that went into this mitigation plan. And also, our deputy city manager, John Tecton, who is here this evening. There he is. They've worked tirelessly over the past year to create this, this plan, which we feel puts us in a good position to be able to identify our hazards. And now, I would like to introduce Art Kirkland, the president of Castle Emergency Management Consulting, who will introduce his team and run you through the presentation.
Thank you very well. Mr. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to start by introducing most of the team that worked on this for us. Arpan Shahkamian, who was born and raised in Glendale, Lorraine Schneider, and Cindy Kirkland. In a brief period of time, I'd like to go over very quickly what we accomplished and why it's important to you. So, have the next slide, please.
Use the mouse right in front of you.
Ah, even better. Local hazard mitigation plans are an effort to reduce loss of life and property in the event of an emergency. They're required by the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief Act, as it was amended in 2000. And they're required to be updated every five years to be current. The process here was, we reviewed a previous plan, which was from 2011, so it was some time expired when we looked at it. Review and update the hazards. Every so often, FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security comes out with different things that have to be considered. Gather public input regarding the hazards and their perception of what the hazards are to Glendale. Develop potential mitigation projects to address those hazards. Gather public input regarding the projects that we've come up with to address those hazards. Publish a draft plan, refine the draft. We're at the City Council approval stage. Once the plan is approved by the City Council, then it's forwarded to California Governor's Office of Emergency Services for approval. Once they approve it, then it's forwarded on to FEMA for final approval, and then the plan becomes effective for a period of five years. The public input, to gather public input, which has become an increasingly important part of this process in the eyes of FEMA, we did two public surveys. First, we did a survey to determine their perception of hazards. Second, we did a follow-on to look at their perception of the potential projects that we had come up with to alleviate those hazards. We had two public meetings, one to address the initial hazards. So, after we had collected the hazards from an online poll, we had a meeting to talk about those hazards and give people a chance to give us face-to-face input. Once the projects were developed and had been put out for comment, we had a second public meeting for, to address those projects. We published a draft for solicitation of input, both amongst the city count, or the city staff and the public. Once that was done, we took all of the comments from those people, put them together in a final draft, which has been out for consideration since late November. Again, a key part of this, and we've done this in the past, the first place that FEMA tends to object is that the public has not been involved enough in the process. We think we've given enough opportunities that the public has had a chance to have substantial input into the process. These were the hazards that were identified, both going into the survey and verified by public polling. Earthquake, of course, wildfire, flooding, pandemic, human cause, and then other. There was a free-form comment in the first survey that allowed folks to name other hazards, and they came up with myriad different hazards. Actually, was the largest category, but not, no single hazard within other was larger than any of the five you see here. Public survey results, the public perception of hazards, 38% of the folks that responded to the survey said they have experienced a natural disaster in the last five years. And when we asked what that was, that was equally spread between drought, and as you remember, we were just coming off a five-year drought at that time, earthquake, wildfire, and windstorm. Their biggest concerns were flood or landslide, which is significant because Glendale's not actually in a flood plain. There's some flooding potential in the south end of the city, but the city itself is not in a flood plain. Windstorm, drought, and earthquake. And again, other concerns were actually higher in total than all, any of those taken out independently. In terms of vulnerability, what we did was ask them to rank order, what do you see the public's vulnerabilities? From any perceived hazard, the number-one perceived vulnerability was, of course, loss of life.
In a brief period of time, I'd like to go over very quickly what we, what we accomplished and why it's important to you, so have the next slide, please.
Use the mouse right.
Ah, even better. Local hazard mitigation plans are an effort to reduce loss of life and property in the event of an emergency. They're required by the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief Act, as it was amended in 2000, and they're required to be updated every five years to be current. The process here was, we reviewed a previous plan, which was from 2011, so it was some time expired when we looked at it. Review and update the hazards. Every so often FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security comes out with different things that have to be considered. Gather public input regarding the hazards and their perception of what the hazards are to Glendale. Develop potential mitigation projects to address those hazards. Gather public input regarding the projects that we've come up with to address those hazards. Publish the draft plan, refine the draft. We're at the city council approval stage. Once the plan is approved by the city council, then it's forwarded to California Governor's Office of Emergency Services for approval. Once they approve it, then it's forwarded on to FEMA for final approval, and then the plan becomes effective for a period of five years. The public input, to gather public input, which has become an increasingly important part of this process in the eyes of FEMA, we did two public surveys. First, we did a survey to determine their perception of hazards. Second, we did a, a follow-on to look at their perception of the potential projects that we had come up with to alleviate those hazards. We had two public meetings, one to address the initial hazards, so after we had collected the hazards from a, on online poll, we had a meeting to talk about those hazards and give people a chance to give us face-to-face input. Once the projects were developed and had been put out for comment, we had a second public meeting for, to address those projects. We published, published a draft for solicitation of input both amongst the city count, or the city staff and the public. Once that was done, we took all of the comments from those people, put them together in a final draft, which has been out for consideration since late November. Again, a key part of this, and when we've done this in the past, the first place that FEMA tends to object is that the public has not been involved enough in the process. We think we've given enough opportunities that the public has had a chance to have substantial input into the process. These were the hazards that were identified, both going into the survey and verified by public polling. Earthquake, of course, wildfire, flooding, pandemic, human cause, and then other. There was a free-form comment in the first survey that allowed folks to name other hazards, and they came up with a myriad different hazards. Actually, was the largest category, but not, no single hazard within other was larger than any of the five you see here. Public survey results, the public perception of hazards, thirty-eight percent of the folks that responded to the survey said they have experienced a natural disaster in the last five years. And when we asked what that was, that was equally spread between drought, and as you remember, we were just coming off a five-year drought at that time, earthquake, wildfire, and windstorm. Their biggest concerns were flood or landslide, which is significant because Glendale's not actually in a flood plain. There's some flooding potential in the south end of the city, but the city itself is not in a flood plain. Windstorm, drought, and earthquake. And again, other concerns were actually higher in total than all, any of those taken out independently. In terms of vulnerability, what we did was ask them to rank order, what do you see the public's vulnerabilities? From any perceived hazard, the number one perceived vulnerability was, of course, loss of life, followed by economic loss. And again, these are rank ordered, so the first, the thing they were the most worried about was loss of life, then economic loss, environmental damage, loss of governance, and then loss of cultural historic sites. There were several other items, but none of those rose above a two or three percent margin in the survey. We drafted a plan based on this, circulated it for staff comment. Numerous members of the city staff had input on this. We accepted and incorporated those, sometimes in a back-and-forth between asking questions and getting clarification of what the concern actually was. Sent it around for a second round of staff comment and review. Once that was done and those changes were incorporated, we released the draft for public review. The final steps, which is where we're at right now, is for the city council to approve the draft plan. Once that's done, we will, we will submit to OES and FEMA. Typically, OES takes about forty-five days to, to approve the plan, and once they're done, typically FEMA takes about another forty-five days to approve, so we're hopeful that within about ninety to a hundred days, we can have an approved plan back to you. Once that's approved, then the city can use that plan to apply for mitigation project funding from FEMA whenever those windows are open. Again, you must complete, must apply during an open funding window, and you must complete a cost-benefit analysis of the projects for which you are requesting funding at the time you request the funding. Again, that's a five-minute overview of a year's worth of work. I'll be more than happy to answer questions if you have them.
Questions, council?
In closing, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm sorry.
Yes, on, doesn't have page number, but public perception of hazards?
Yes, sir.
Biggest concern, this is? Yes.
Yes, sir.
This one, yeah. Biggest concern, it says, this is done in California or somewhere else? Or entire units?
This was published in Glendale specifically.
Glendale.
Glendale, yes, sir. We, we actually had your public information folks help us totalize that.
Flood and landslide is, people are worried more than earthquake?
Sir, that's what we got from the public.
I thought maybe this is for East Coast when I was looking.
Yes, sir, I understand.
They don't see earthquake and they see flood every day.
We were surprised as well.
One of the things taking consideration whenever we do these surveys is there, it's not an accurate survey of what everybody in Glendale thinks, because we send, we send out a link basically saying, "Please come here and take our survey. It takes about ten minutes." Certain motivations drive people to answer these, and my guess would be, for whatever reason, we had some folks that were, for whatever reason, concerned about flood and landslide, maybe they live on a hillside. You do have some landslide zones in Glendale. And then they may talk to four or five friends, who they also get to take the survey, and it can skew our survey results a little bit. Bottom line is, we were about as surprised by this as you are, but that is exactly what the survey said.
How many people you surveyed?
Sir, honestly, off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Okay, thank you.
The questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a, a, I don't know, a suggestion, and I wanted to mention this to the chief. I already have, but just for tonight's meeting and, and for you as well. I know in the report, you talk about mitigation programs, and you say that there's a need for different approaches, and to suppress, prevent, and mitigate fires. Okay, because I'm, I'm surprised too that fires weren't up there, because we just went through a season of, of fires that was incredible. So, what I was going to ask and suggest is that perhaps we can initiate or, or look for a feasibility study on getting grants to assist homeowners, our residents, who have dead trees in their residential properties, and perhaps receive, get grants to help them to remove those trees. I understand it's expensive to do, but it could prevent a house from burning down or from, a fire from spreading. So, I just ask the chief and perhaps staff to look into a program where we try to, you know, procure grants to assist our homeowners, our residents, to get rid of these dead trees that could be fuel for fires.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Devine, we will look at, at opportunities for seeking those grants for tree removals of dead trees within our city, and we will report that information back to you.
Great, thank you. This is a great report, by the way, if I'm sorry.
Of course.
Was comprehensive, and it was even interesting to read.
We do our best.
I, I was shocked under, to, to learn that the entire city is a fire danger area, not just portions of it, like on, like on the map, but the entire city. So, I think we all have to be very cognizant of, of what this report says and what we can do to, to be prepared for all of these situations. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Mayor, just in closing, I do want to say, your staff's been amazing. Andrew, Eliza, did a yeoman's work on putting, putting things together. We could not have done it without them going far above and beyond what I've expected from any other city staff that I've worked with. So, thank them very, thank, thank you for their work, very much.
Thank you. That's, that's good. Sounds good. Thank you for the report. It's very comprehensive, as reflected by the paucity of questions that were posed to you. So, if we have a, a motion?
I'll move the item?
For the resolution? Okay. We have a motion and a second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. Next item is item number eight A.
Eight A is city manager regarding commission on status of women's 2019-22 strategic plan. Eight A one is a motion to approve the 2019-22 strategic plan as recommended by the commission on status of women.
Okay, who's going to present?
Ms. Christine Powers, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, council member staff. Christine Powers with the city manager's office, and I staff the commission on the status of women. So, since 2009, the commission on the status of women has had a strategic plan in place. The strategic plans range an average of three to four years each, so currently, what's before you is a third iteration of the strategic plan. The previous plan spanned from 2015 to 18 that council approved, and this plan had used a consultant who worked with city staff and the commissioners to compose a strategic plan. The one that you have before you is, is similar to the previous one. Not much has changed as far as the vision and the mission and the values of the commission, and therefore, some of the information's been tweaked, we've moved some things around, but the commission worked hard to present a strategic plan to you. Some of the accomplishments under the previous strategic plan included a comprehensive report on the status of women and girls in Glendale, and this was done in partnership with Mount St. Mary's University. There was the transfer of Camp Rosie to the YWCA, and that was to ensure that the Camp Rosie program occurred in the community and was available to the members of our community to participate. And most recently, one of the other accomplishments was the girls' fire camp that the commission partnered with the fire department to do.
How's, how's Camp Rosie doing with YWCA?
It went well, Mayor Sinanian. It was their first year. They absorbed it as part of their violence prevention program. They really do see Camp Rosie as a part of what they teach the campers is violence prevention at the end of the day, and to empower girls to actually avoid those kind of situations as they get older. So, they plan on offering it again. They offered it free. They were thinking of charging it first, but they did offer it free, and they're going to do more and more outreach and continue it.
So, last year was the first time that YWCA took?
Yes.
To charge of it? And was there a break between when we were providing it and the YWCA?
Yes, Mayor Sinanian, there was, I believe, I believe at least three years. There was some transition within the YWCA, and under the leadership of Tara Peterson, once she was able to come on board and integrate it into the program, we were able to successfully transfer it over to the YWCA.
And someone might think, why am I asking these questions specifically about this program? Because back in the day, when I was a parks commissioner and the CDBG commissioner, Camp Rosie was constantly in front of me, whether it's as part of the parks program or as part of some, a group that received CDBG funding. And it seemed like an awesome program. It was a little different in profile. It wasn't about violence prevention. It was more about like girl power and empowerment of, of young, young girls and education and just, you know, cooperative efforts. But it sounds like it's back on, and it's still a good program, and a lot of young women are volunteering for it, or signing up for it?
Yes, and the, the spirit and the curriculum, the core curriculum, is essentially the same. It's just what they believe, what they're teaching the girls through this camp is, at the end of the day, skills that will help them prevent a domestic violent situation and being in relationships where they are stuck in that cycle of abuse.
Okay. Thank you.
So, members of the commission worked to present the strategic plan that is before you today. There are four strategic aims, and if I can just go through them very quickly. The first strategic aim is to evaluate and assess. The report on the status of women and girls is likely something that will, the commission will tackle in the coming years under the strategic plan. When we go into our 2020 census, we get back some good data, the commission will reconsider working with Mount St. Mary's again and doing another report. Strategic aim two, policy development, advocacy, and advising. The commission recommends certain state legislation that comes before you in the form of legislative updates for your recommendation and to support, and a lot of those have to do with human trafficking and safety of women. Strategic aim three, communication and education. The commission provides educational presentations, and they are constantly examining and updating the resource guide that they have for women and families, and the police department does rely on this and hands it out to constituents that they come into contact with that could use that information. And strategic aim four, community partnerships and outreach. This is really a way for the commission to check in with what organizations are doing, local and surrounding organizations. Do they meet the needs of women and girls in Glendale? And what are some partnerships to maximize that outreach for the women and girls in our community? That concludes my report. I have three members of the commission who are here today, Commissioner Arminay Perian, Commissioner Elena Samirjin, and Susan Brusalian. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Christine, you didn't mention the girls' fire camp. I know it's on the, and I wanted you to talk a little bit about that, because I attended the first day, and I, I think, I don't know if, Mayor, if you were there or not, but it was fantastic.
I was there as well.
And, okay. And you want to tell us a little bit about that? Because that's, that was great.
It was a mail there.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right.
Yes, councilmember Devine, mayor members of council, so as you know, there was a girls' fire camp, and it was called a girls' fire camp, but it was open to all genders, and it was really a way, it was a partnership between the commission on the status of women and our Glendale Fire Department in an effort to help promote the fire service to girls. So, they had a tangible experience to understand what it looked like, to make connections, to meet some of our female firefighters, and they had a great time. They climbed a ladder to the top of Fire Station 21. They went through, they did the Jaws of Life, they used chainsaws, they did all sorts of amazing things, and one of the girls said, "Apparently, I'm underestimating my own potential." So, to have at least one person say something like that and consider, you know, the noble calling of fire service, I think, is wonderful.
Now, can I ask you, I, I guess it must be difficult, since you only meet once every three months, I think it is, to really put forth any, a lot of programs like that? Because that's really a terrific program.
To answer that question, councilmember Devine, so, based on the strategic plan, the commission creates ad hoc committees that really drive these goals and keep them going. So, in between their quarterly meetings, you have these ad hoc committees that are meeting. They're usually groups of two, along with the student commissioners, that meet with staff, and they move, they keep the momentum going of the commission, they're doing the work. And if there is a need to meet beyond the quarterly, if there's a, something that's very timely that the commission needs to weigh in on, we can certainly call a special meeting. So far, it's worked out, and it does require some extra work in between meetings on behalf of the commissioners, but they're willing to put in the time.
If you don't mind, we have three commissioners who are present here. I'd like to ask them the same question and hear their response. And the question specifically is whether the quarterly meetings provide you enough time or enough interaction with your fellow commissioners to get those things that you think, you believe this commission needs to accomplish, done? Because I was not a big fan of?
Neither was I.
Yeah, of, of the time being cut and the, and sort of the fundraising function being taken away. I never quite understood and, and didn't really support it. But I want to hear it. Maybe, maybe this arrangement is good. Maybe it works. So, you tell us.
We make it work, Mayor Sinanian, but quite frankly, it is much more productive if we have monthly meetings. That said, I believe that we might still have the need for ad hoc committee meetings.
Even with the monthly meetings?
I believe so, because those are focused on the specific aims itself. So, what we do is we break out in groups of two, as Ms. Powers stated, and we meet to address the specific aims. But quite frankly, I, I believe that if we had them week, monthly, we would be much further along.
Okay. Your, your, your input, to the extent it's different?
I'm, I'm, I'm new to the commission, so I'm just learning the ropes, but for, as far as I'm concerned, we have enough time, but if, if Commissioner Perian feels that we need more time, depending on the need, of course, I'm for it.
I would like to somehow agendize this, or at least put this on the radar, to look at the issue of whether quarterly meetings are sufficient for this commission, because honestly, of all the commissions, to have their meetings cut, this commission was not the one. But having said that again, let's look into the merits of it and potentially expand the number of meetings.
And, and I just want to add to that, Mayor, that having been on that commission for eight years, I know what it is to meet once a month and how much can be done, the awareness that can be raised in the community on women's issues, projects that you can do, and so I'm, I'm in agreement with you.
And one more thing, back in the day, this commission was a fundraising machine. No, no other commission had that ability to raise the funds the way they did. Of course, no other commission actually had that function of raising funds, but nevertheless, it was very effective, very impactful. Mr. Garpetian, do you have something to add? Or you were just?
Not, not on this subject. I, I agree with, with you, I, I, but not on this subject.
Why we don't leave it to themselves to decide how many times they want to meet? Why we are?
Because we're approving the budget for the committee, for the commission, and depending on how often they meet, our budget will be reflective of that. It's actually, has been a council decision in the past to cut it down.
No, but, but my, still, my question is, the commission itself, they have to come forward and say that we need more meetings and we need more budget. Why we are encouraging that? That's my question.
Well, that's why I asked the question of them, for us to tell, for them to tell us. So, that's exactly what I did.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for having us. I think more meetings, obviously more time together would bring more ideas, but one thing that you mentioned was something that was cut before I entered the commission, and that is the fundraising. So, I think that would really give us, give us legs, if we do meet more, to actually do something, because a lot of time finances do tie us to a border.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at the end of the day, we'll, we'll bring a, a report back to the city council, but if, if we go back some years in terms of really bringing this commission back to its original intent, which was a recommending body regarding issues pertaining to women and girls at the time, and that recommending body, really focusing on the legislative platform of the types of things that the council could ultimately take a stance on, morphed into a fundraising arm. And that, that morphed into that fundraising arm became very staff-intensive, as, as you can imagine. The commission is a, a volunteer body, as appointed by the city council, and the fundraising arm was something that became quite intensive for city staff to run actual fundraisers on an annual basis, and it was very staff-intensive. And the amount of time that it took, a staff person that is supposed to have a portion of their time for the commission on the status of women, we were unable to maintain that balance. And so, the conversation through, through the budget process, we came back to its original intent, which was a recommending body to the city council as it relates to, to women and girl issues. We can most definitely bring a report back to the city council, and today, there is no, the, the commission can have more than quarterly meetings if they so choose to, based on information that may come to them, and they need to make a decision in terms of bringing something forward to the city council, and they can request that through city staff, through Christine Powers and the ad hoc committees. And so, we'll, we'll bring a report back that, that provides you with that information and, and take direction from council, but it's, again, a balancing act for us in terms of the availability of staff to be able to provide good, solid information to the commission and ultimately to the city council.
Exactly, and then that, that's why I mentioned the fact that there's a budgetary issue associated with a number of meetings that are there. I just... I just don't believe for one second that budgetary constraints are a reason for us to cut down a Commission that deals with women's and, and girls' issues, as you, as you put it, to quarterly meetings. So, let's have, let's have a report on that, and I'd love to hear from the other Commissioners as well. We'll take it from there.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I have some comments, I have some comments.
So, reading your plan, thank you, ladies, for coming forward, I'm your new Commissioner,
Susan.
Thank you for appointing me, Ara.
Thank you. I know you're doing a good job, we were talking about that today. It's not easy to step into a, an ongoing Commission where there's, anyway, dynamics that have already existed. So, in terms of your strategic aims, maybe Chris, I'll be directing this to Christine, I guess, assess the issues and needs confronting all women, and then number two is recommend to the City Council policies, and then number three, increase the level of knowledge in the community. So, a few years ago, I made suggestions, and I was really serious about these, and it didn't go anywhere, and I'm kind of not happy about that. What I'd like to see are some metrics. I'd like to see metrics, you know, in your large categories. Let's talk about health. Let's talk about life expectancies. How is the life, if, to the extent you can get it to Glendale? The life expectancies in Glendale, women versus men. I want to talk about cancer rates between women and men. Let's go to education. I want to see dropout rates between women and men, boys and girls. I'd like to see graduation rates between women and men. Let's look at employment. Is there a discrepancy in hourly wages? We've heard about that, and there's been some discourse on the national level, some disagree, some, you know, agree to that. Let's talk about incarcerations, arrests, women versus men, convictions, women versus men, homelessness, women versus men. I mean, these are your critical core, and I think they, I think it's much more basic than, do we have fire captains yet? Of course, we have a city manager who is a woman. I'm not sure we need to go into the Glendale organization, I think it's pretty evident what we have. So, I'd like to see those basic data and, and go from there, and maybe address, address them one way or the other, if, if need be. So, and that might give you something to do in those extra meetings that, that you're, that you're going to go through.
Christine, you know, isn't most, a lot of that information is in your report, the status of women in Glendale, right?
Some of the information that you mentioned, Councilmember Najarian, is, is listed in our report on the Status of Women and Girls that was issued in 2016. As far as health and life expectancy, I believe in the city of Glendale, women do, trying to remember some of the statistics, women do outlive men, cancer rates. Men and women were relatively the same as far as compared to the county and to the state. Rates of Alzheimer's were slightly higher in women than they were in men.
How about graduation rates? I think you guys do pretty good in that.
So, in Glendale Unified School District...
How about dropout rates? The men are the ones dropping out.
Women do, the girls...
We should have a men's commission, I think, to deal with these issues, and I'm serious about that. Don't scoff, no one should scoff about that. I mean, let's see where the differences are. If the differences are, are trivial or non-significant, then, you know, fine, but if there's, certainly if we see that there's a, let's say, a spike in, or a gross disparity in employment between women and men, who's ever at the short end, we should work on that. Incarceration, criminal activity, we should definitely work on who's ever, you know, who's ever got the problem, we should work on that. So, that's my point. I mean, I really want to, I mean, I appreciate where we're going, but we have to look at this as a community. We, as a council, need to help the entire community in different ways. And I'm, I've always had a... My, my political correctness alarm is going off right now in my head, but let's, let me just state that we need to help all segments of our community, all genders, all ethnicities in the areas where they need help. And we should, wherever we find deficiencies, we should all, as a city, pull together to help in that regard. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Mr. Carpet, then?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very comprehensive report, I really appreciate it. It's a great plan that you, you put together. And most of the time that we get reports, this kind of reports, not only in Glendale, we get the numbers about domestic violence and human trafficking and everything else. But what's encouraging in this report is, there was a Glendale-specific report that was done, and I quote, that says, "One of the most remarkable findings from this report was that the women in Glendale not only made as much as their male counterparts, but earned 105% of what men in Glendale earn." So, as a father of three, three, three girls, I'm very proud of this, and I think men in this town are doing something right, treating women the right way, treating everyone fairly, and, and, and this is the, the result. They, the females, the, the women make 105% of their male counterparts. You don't see that report in many other...
So, what should we do with that information? Leave it at that? Should we wonder why it's that way? Should we...
You can always analyze different issues in many different ways. I don't agree, I don't disagree with your suggestions to not forget the, the young boys and the, the, the young, young teenage boys especially, because teenage, teenage years is when they need the most help. So, I don't disagree with your, your statement, Mr. Najarian, but I was very happy to see this part of the report, because most of the time, as a, as a man, I get discouraged to see all the domestic violence numbers and, and the, the human trafficking numbers and everything else, but this one really gave me a, a great hope, if you will. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I...
Okay, thank you. I, I, you know, if there's data like that out there about how well our, our women are doing financially in Glendale, we need to embrace it, trumpet it, and then realize that that's Glendale, and then there's the rest of America. But the numbers are very clear as to where they are. I mean, we can provide information on income discrepancies, despite the fact that colleges nowadays are more than 50% female. Or we can just look at what's happening with the, with the state. Just recently, our former governor had to pass, what was it, it was, I think it was a law where he's forcing California corporations to actually include women in their, on their boards. You know, that kind of thing happens because there are no women on the boards. It's not like he woke up one weird morning and decided that he wants to come up with this. No, he came up with it because he's looking at these boards and realizes that women are basically not welcome. And so, we have these issues. Certainly, there are numbers that are very encouraging, things are improving, but to, I don't think we want to pretend like there's no glass ceiling, we don't want to pretend that the system isn't still kind of by inertia, man-centric or male-centric, so. With that, you know, I, I welcome all the data. I welcome all the data, let's look at it.
Well, and I, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments, because they're absolutely true. And I also want to say to Councilmember Najarian that I think if the Commission had the opportunity to meet more often, they could cover those topics. I mean, we used to do that back in the day, when I was on the Commission. Every month, we would have a different issue that was brought up and talked about. Women who watch the program were educated about different issues, and I just think that meeting once every three months doesn't really afford them the opportunity to do that. So, with that, I will end my discussion as well, and thank you all for the report. Nice job, ladies, keep up the good work. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. And that is a, an action item. I'll move the item.
Second.
If we have the roll call, please. Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sunanyan?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. And we'll take item number eight B next.
Eight B is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. Compensation alignment, one, is a resolution establishing Glendale City Employees Association, GCEA and GCA confidential classifications. Two is a resolution establishing Glendale Management Association, GMA and GMA exempt classifications. Three is a resolution establishing executive classifications.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll go directly to Human Resources Director, Mr. Matt Doyle.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you are resolutions addressing classification and compensation adjustments for various categories of employees represented by the GCEA and GMA bargaining groups. This process has come to be known as compensation alignment, where we target specific job categories in areas that we've fallen behind in our compensation structure. This is the fourth year we're doing this, and this process actually began in the 2015, 2016 fiscal year. This followed about over six years where the city was unable to provide basic cost of living increases for its employees in these, these job categories. And also during that period of time, these employees experienced layoffs and even one year pay reduction. In this process, typically, we look at job classifications where we've experienced difficulty in both recruitment and retention of some of our most talented, skilled employees. This year's process involved a compensation survey of 29 classifications within, again, the GCEA and GMA bargaining units utilizing our traditional ten-city labor market. As anticipated, the vast majority of the job classifications studied were significantly below the labor market average, some by as much as 20%. Our objective here is to try to target those jobs that are lagging behind in the job market. In years past, we focused on positions within our engineering sections, finance, IT, positions in our utility, our, our civilian positions in police and fire. This year, we have a good representation of both the professional office as well as field classifications, which, if adjusted, we, we think it would help us in our recruitment and retention efforts. The recommendations are, in this report, to adjust those salary ranges depending on how far below they are within the labor market, and add salary steps to the tail end or the upper end of those job classifications. We had a lot of discussion on which ones to try and address. We started with those that were 10% or below and sort of worked from there to see what we could afford. The process of addressing these by salary step and adding the steps enables us to spread whatever costs there are of this process over several years, so it doesn't hit the budget all at once. In addition to the compensation alignment portion of this, there are some mid-year reorganizations that a couple of the departments have put forth. These are things we typically want to do during the budget process, but there are a couple of these items which mainly involve the establishment of new titles that would be filled at a future date. A lot of these couldn't wait till, till budget time. In addition to that, this, we do have a resolution here involving executive recruitments to address the, the contractually mandated 5% pay, pay increase adjustment for the city manager, which, upon her appointment a year ago, is called for the, the adjustment one year, one year later. So, with that, if you have questions about this process or any of these resolutions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Question? Yes, Mr. Zaga-Janian?
Can you tell me, how many people will be impacted by these increases?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Agajanian, 70 employees will be impacted by this. We surveyed 29 classifications, and we're, we're recommending adjustments on, looks like about 20 total, and, but as far as the number of actual incumbents, people affected by this, it covers 70 employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Thank you for your report. We discussed this in closed session, and now it's before us. So, essentially, what we're doing is, we are, as you said, to paraphrase your, your eloquence, is we are targeting those important positions in the city of Glendale that we feel are underpaid compared to the other survey cities. We're giving those classifications, as opposed to the individuals, we're giving those classifications additional opportunity for increased income through additional steps in the years to come. What we don't want is, we don't want to lose our city workforce. These are the people that make Glendale happen. A city is a service organization. We provide services to our people. We don't sell goods, except for the power plant. You know, we, we provide services to our residents, and that's what makes the difference between a good city and a bad city. We don't want to lose our workers to other cities, which will cause disruption in both the servicing of our residents and the internal organization. And this is a way that we, as council members, can make up, in part, the discrepancies in other, in these classifications compared to other cities. And it's something that this council is continuing to do, our budget permitting. This isn't the first time we've done it, it's not going to be the last time we do it, and I think we know we're going to continue to do it. So, we very much appreciate the hard work of our employees and managers, to some extent, the ones that are covered. We wish that we had the funds to make, make a blanket coverage amongst all labor groups and bring them up to par with some of the other cities that are in a different financial situation than we are. The Anahims, or the Inglewoods, the Santa Monicas, where they've got different revenue sources that this city doesn't have. But we do want you to know that we do appreciate the work of our employees from every level, and this is one way that we're trying to make it up to you, to say, hang, hang in there, we're with you, and we appreciate your work. Is that about it? I mean, that's the sentiment, that's the sentiment behind this action.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, I couldn't, I couldn't have said it better myself. And again, the last thing we want to do is, is fall into a situation where we are not competitive or no longer competitive. The cost of recruitment, the cost of retaining, the cost of losing good, quality staff is significant, particularly after having invested so much time in, in employees, to see them leave is, is quite, quite problematic.
And as to the second issue, I stand by the adjustment to the city manager's salary. She's done a hell of a job. It's been a hell of a year, both on the dais and outside. We've covered a lot of issues, and I will stand up to any critic to justify the, the salary that we're going to afford her going forward this next year.
Talking about critics, Mr. Mohill, you want to come up and...
Why not?
You did submit a card.
I set it up, I teed it up.
You teed it up.
Teed it up.
Julie, I know that.
How much time do you need?
Just the three minutes.
Okay, great.
Three minutes and 15 seconds.
There you go, four minutes it is.
Good evening, Mayor Sunanyan and council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. As I have said many times in the past, this council needs to do the right thing and leave CalPERS. It will not be easy, but doing the right thing by this council never is. Here we go again. City employers are complaining they are not making enough money compared to other comparable cities. After 30 years of service, city employers can retire at the ripe old age of 50 or 55, depending on their contracts. Foreign police officers can retire with the night, with 90% of their last year's salary as their annual retirement for life. City management employees receive 75% of their last year's salary, and general employees 60% of their last year's salary as their annual retirement for life. These city employees will live 25 to 35 years beyond their retirement, and Glendale taxpayers on the hook for their outrageous retirement pensions, Mr. Najarian. Who in private industry receives these outrageous, these types of pensions, types, Mr. Najarian? Stephanie Cleary, Chief Librarian, retired in July 28, 2018, with a minimum annual retirement of $194,000 for life. Jim Starbird, City Manager, $245,000 annual pension for life. Ron DiPampa, Police Chief, $213,000 annual pension for life. And Bob Elliott, Director of Finance, to retire this year with a minimum of $175,000 annual pension for life, Mr. Najarian. to retire this year with a minimum of $175,000 annual pension for life, Mr. Najarian. Today, police and fire department costs are over 80%. That's 80% of the general fund, including salary and retirement pension benefits that leave only 20% of the general fund for affordable housing, senior programs, roads, parks, et cetera. These outrageous salaries and retirement pension benefits are why our city unions worked so hard and contributed lots of money to the Yes on Measure S campaign, the so-called Glendale Quality of Life and Essential Services Protection Measure. The folks who have to pay these outrageous and unsustainable salaries and retirement pension benefits will be living on Social Security upon their retirement. Comparing salaries to other cities means nothing to the folks who have to live on Social Security and a 401K plan when they retire at the age of 66. The average Social Security recipient receives about $16,000 a year, and the maximum payout by Social Security is about $36,000 a year. Again, leaving Calpers will not be easy, ladies and gentlemen, but doing the right thing by this council never is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Yep. May I?
Sure. That's the only speaker card that we have, by the way.
Do you want to say, Ms. Something, Mrs. Devine?
Yes, I do. Do I have your permission?
Absolutely. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
It's not to Mr. Mohill, right?
No, no, it's just in general, it's not to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just want to say that some of the employees that we are, that will be receiving this raise are not even at minimum wage right now. So we will be giving them at least that. I consider this group to be the boots on the ground, 90% of them. These are the employees, these are our staff, that provide things like traffic painter, wastewater maintenance worker, groundskeeper, street maintenance, water facilities. These are the people that are really, that we should all be willing to give a raise to, if that's what we're calling it, adjustment, a pay adjustment, because these are really the heart and soul of the workers that we have in our city that are doing the services for all of us. So I have no problem with giving, okaying these adjustments in salaries.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Garpetian, something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo my colleagues' comments, and also, when you do the survey, that's why we're doing a survey, not for the entire, for all the employees. We do it in certain, certain positions. And when they're behind or below 10, 15, 20% compared to our neighboring cities or compared to other cities that we're competing against, we have no other choice, and it's just the right thing to do. It's not that we want to increase all the salaries of everybody. That's not how it is. And some of them are performance-based. They have, it's like sliding scale. They have to do certain things to get to the second point. And as far as the Measure S goes, I think there are, if I'm not mistaken, two ballot measures floating around for 2020. If we didn't take that money, Mr. Mohill, that by 2020, almost 75% of it could be gone. And if not 2020, 2021, 2022, there are different measures that is going to be put on the ballot, county level and state level, and that funding would have been gone. With this tough, you said decisions are tough. It was a tough decision for this council to ask for our residents to vote for a tax measure, but they did because they believed in this council, and this council will do the right thing. So with that, I support this item.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian, do you have something to add, or no?
I, no, no, Mr. Mohill, you know the protocol. The protocol doesn't allow for it.
Mr. Mohill? So, yes, at the last meeting, I mentioned the fact that, just as we had told our residents, AQMD has introduced a ballot measure for a half a percent tax increase, which we will not be subjected to now. Our residents will not have to pay into a, no, it's half, yeah. And that money would have gone to AQMD, and we would have received cents on a dollar, as with every other county and statewide measure that's passed.
And on top of that, Mr. Mayor, they're thinking about a high-speed rail sales tax on top of that. So we did the right thing. Clearly, in hindsight, we did the right thing.
And now, the money that Measure S generates for the city of Glendale is going to go to the city of Glendale. The monies that are spent here are going to remain in Glendale. That's what we're trying to accomplish, and this council, more than ever, is committed to using that money for intended purposes. First of all, whatever the most urgent issue happens to be in the city of Glendale at the time, right now, it's affordable housing. And I think there is a full commitment by this council to use Measure S for those purposes. It is not going to be used for salaries. It's not going to be used for staff, and that's been amply, has been made amply clear, and that has nothing to do with this right now. And with that in mind, since we have no other speakers, I'm going to ask for a motion for all three of these resolutions. Can we take them together, Mr. Garcia?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Nersanany?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. Apparently, there are no cards submitted for oral communication. That is a record, right? Is this a record? I don't believe, even when we had a meeting that went to 3 o'clock, 3:00 in the morning, a couple of people submitted cards. Not today. Thank you very much. Next item?
Is there any new business?
Is there new business? No.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
And we're adjourned at 7:30.